Okay, I think that's 10 seconds. Hello. This is the Zoning Board of Appeals, Tuesday, May 10th, 2022. I am Janice Tatarca. I am joined here by my board members Hugo Perdomo, Joan Cromwell, and Joe Mahoney. Also over here you have John De Priest and Valestiki. People, when you speak, this is being taped, so please, when you speak, please speak directly into a microphone. We are going to take things out of order today. We're going to start with 220206-320 Revere Beach Parkway for 320 Revere Beach Parkway Realty LLC and GVLP Corporation. Sir?
Manager-in-Chef and Members of the Board, Anthony Ross, on behalf of the applicant, I'd like to formally request a withdrawal of the application and petition. I was told...
Lift it up, yeah.
Oh, sorry, sorry. I'd like to formally withdraw the application. I did receive Mr. De Priest's comments on it. We actually revised the plans. So we need time to actually file new plans and we're actually looking at it in a budding parcel. But more importantly, due to the shortage of members tonight, and I'm actually traveling to Europe on two of the meetings that would happen in July and August. So therefore, because I'd like to withdraw without prejudice, so it gives me opportunity to come back on a later date.
Do I have a motion to withdraw without prejudice? Do I have a... Joe, do I have a second? Hugo, all in favor? Aye.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman, thank you, Members of the Board, thank you, John.
And we'll move on to 2022-07-168-170, 172 Maverick Street, 168 Maverick Ave, LLC.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman, Members of the Board, same...
Say it again, formally.
Same, formally, as I have conflicts because right now, July and August, I won't be at those meetings. I did not want to table it for four months, so therefore I asked this board to allow me to withdraw the application without prejudice, so that I may refile on the September date.
Do I have a motion to withdraw without prejudice? Made by Joe, seconded by Hugo, all in favor?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman.
Enjoy your trip, feel better.
Thank you, thank you, John.
Okay, now we'll go back to the start of things. 51, 2022-03, 51 Library Street, Pedro Florentino. They've made a request to continue. Do I have a vote to continue this? Hugo, second. Joe, all in favor?
Aye.
This will be... Excuse me, this will be continued. The next one, 2022-04...
I'm sorry.
Okay. It will be continued to the next meeting. So the next meeting of the... Just so you know, the next meeting of this DBA is on 6/14, and it'll be here, okay? 2022-04-162 Broadway, Ruth Jeanette Guzman. For a special permit and variance seeking approval for the conversion of an existing commercial space on the second floor and attic to a one-family residential unit with first-floor space remaining, a commercial unit which does not meet current minimum zoning requirements for open space, lot area, floor area ratio, and a number of off-street parking spaces. Is somebody here to speak on this?
I don't see her here.
Shall I move on to the next... I'm going to move on to the next case, though we'll just keep that open for now. 320-2020-5, 339-341 Broadway, excuse me, 339-341 Broadway Realty Trust for a special permit and variance seeking approval to construct a second floor in infill and full-third story in existing open height ceiling space with proposed use of second-story space as continuing restaurant space and the third story to be a residential dwelling.
He's not here either.
And he's not here either. You snooze, you lose. We're going on to the next one. 220208-307 Broadway, Concrete Garden, Inc. This is the... Who is anybody here? For a special permit seeking approval to renovate the existing first-floor and mezzanine tenant space proposing a retail marijuana facility.
Good evening.
Good evening. Could you please introduce yourself?
My name is Vladimir Samuel. I am the president, co-founder of Concrete Garden.
Could you give your address, please, for the record?
307 Broadway.
Would you like to talk us through what you're proposing, sir?
Yes, of course.
If you're more comfortable sitting, you can also speak. You can just bring the microphone with you.
I think I'm fine. Thank you. I appreciate it, though.
Okay.
So you can go to the next slide. All right, there we go. So Concrete Garden, it was founded by myself and my co-owner, Alex Yo-Yo. We're both longtime Chelsea residents. We graduated Chelsea High School.
I'm going to ask you to hold on for one second as I ask the people outside to please be a little quiet.
No problem.
Okay, thank you. We'll do that. Please continue, Mr. Samuel.
Okay. Yeah, so we're longtime Chelsea residents, both of us. We actually hold social equity and economic empowerment with the Cannabis Commission, so we hold that status with them. Alex himself, he owns Yo-Yo Trucking, which is a trucking company which he started and he founded, and he operates it himself. I, myself, I have a background in chemistry, horticulture, as well as hospitality and customer service. So I think we're well-suited to open a cannabis dispensary as well. So we'll be a vertically integrated business, so this will be our first dispensary, but we're looking at opening a warehouse as well as we're doing delivery from peer to peer as well as to businesses, other cannabis businesses. So that's what we're looking to do with the business.
Okay.
We can go to the next slide. This is the personnel. Pretty much going to be my board is me, myself, Vladimir Samuel, my co-founder, Alex Yo-Yo, as he strolls in. For community outreach, we have Iman Rodriguez, who is a longtime Chelsea resident as well. Muna Kingston, he works in the city of Cambridge. He does communications for the libraries, and he used to work for the mayor in the city of Cambridge as well. And Dan Carpenter, he actually ran the poker room in Encore Casino when it first opened, so we're glad to have him aboard as our human resource manager as well. We can go to the next one. So this is pretty much the floor plan when it's all said and done, what we're going to have. So there's a hallway leading to it, so there will never be customers waiting outside the store. We have a long hallway, so they could wait in the hallway. There'll never be traffic on the street. So there'll be a security desk when you first walk in. You check in with security.
Why don't you... Could you do me a favor? Take that... Walk over there and point or else have...
Oh, no problem.
Or have Mr. Yo-Yo point, whichever... But if... He just can't speak.
No problem, so...
Okay.
So you walk in. This is Broadway here. Oh, sorry, Yo-Yo, sorry. This is Broadway right here, and then this is the entrance. You come in. There's actually a jewelry store off to the right there, and then this is us back here. And this is the security vestibule. You come in, you have to be buzzed in. Security will check your ID first, and then you'll be buzzed in. After that, you come here to the secondary security desk. We'll have a customer service associate there, and they'll take your information. They'll log you into the computer and such and such. At that point, we'll have a customer service associate come out and greet the customer and then take their order for whatever they're there for for that day. We have a vault here in the back room. Then we have upstairs, this will be an area... Oh, up here will be an area where there will be a break room, and there will also be an office back there for the manager. Yeah, so that's pretty much the space as it is right now, well, as it will be when we finish with it.
Well, I mean, is that... I was going to say, is that a mezzanine or a second floor? I mean, what is...
This... Oh, this is the second floor. See, I pointed to it right here, but this is actually the breakdown of the second floor. So this is the break room here, the office, and there's a mechanical room where all the security things will be housed.
So what's happening in that big area on the first floor in the back?
This one here?
Yes.
This is on the first floor. This is separate from our unit.
Oh, that's not your facility?
Exactly. That's separate from our unit.
Okay, thank you. Okay, all right, continue.
We can go to the next slide. So parking, so for right now, we're not going to allow employees to park in the downtown area at all. So we were working on renting parking spaces at the garage on 17 Fourth Street. I actually have two spaces there as we speak. Today, I just inked it today. So I have two spaces at the garage on 17 Fourth Street. We're looking to rent office space actually for our headquarters at 90 and 100 Everett Avenue. So that's going to come with about 15 to 20 parking spaces. I only really need 10.
But that's a complete... That's a different... That has nothing to do with this application?
That has no... It has nothing... Well, there will be no cannabis in that area. There'll literally just be our headquarters.
No, but that's not our... But that has nothing to do with... Even if you have 20 spaces there, that's not something we're talking about now?
Okay.
This application, correct? No, that's a question, correct?
Oh, no, yeah, I was going to say, because I would have the employees park there, at which point we'd have either a shuttle service or we'd give them a weekly stipend for rideshare services so that they get to and from their car and the dispensary, which is about five minutes walking distance.
But you currently don't have that space?
No, no, I went to go look at both spaces last week and this week.
Okay, thank you. Okay, yep.
And so, yeah, that's what we're doing for parking, pretty much. And so we're going for off-street parking permit so the customers can park on Broadway.
John, let me ask you a question from a... Obviously, we can't even really talk about that because it's not before us, but would that be too far a distance to be able to lock, to consider them? If he came to us and...
Yes, it's more than 300 feet.
Okay. All right.
And plus, you would not own them. You would only lease them.
Say that again?
You would not own them. You would only lease them.
Yes.
Right, so in order to be counted towards your parking requirement, they have to be within 300 feet. They have to be owned by the same entity and not leased.
Okay.
Okay, but thank you. I mean, that's good information. Thank you. Continue.
And so we can go to the next slide now.
John, next slide.
So for security, there will always be two security guards on site. One will be in the front checking customers as they come in, and another will be in the retail space in the area behind the point-of-sales cash wrap. Customers will have to be buzzed into the store. Any cannabis-related deliveries will be taken on Division Street between 8:00 AM and 2:00 PM because we don't want to cause any traffic for the school traffic before and after school. So we're just going to take it between 8:00 AM and 2:00 PM, and then we also don't want to take any night deliveries for loss-prevention purposes. And so any FedEx and UPS, they'll be taken to the front and will be signed by the security in the front. And we will have a plethora of cameras. I know we had submitted... I don't know if you guys have the copy of our security plan, but there's a plethora of security cameras, panic buttons, and other surveillance mechanisms that we have that will be scattered throughout the building.
Okay, thank you.
And, yeah, that's it for the presentation. Thank you for having us, and we'll take questions right now.
What are your hours of operation?
Our hours of operation will be 10:00 PM to 9:00 AM. I mean, 10:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
Seven days a week?
Seven days a week.
Okay, thank you. Any questions before we open it up to the public for now? Hugo?
Your deliveries, what... How are you going to get to the building, your deliveries?
Division Street. We're taking deliveries on the back of the building at Division Street, so we have access to the back door, and it goes straight to our facility.
How about the sign?
The sign?
Yeah, the sign.
We're going to put the sign on the front of the building.
Could you show on the floor plan how it gets delivered from Division Street?
Yeah, no problem. So they'll come behind Division Street here, and this is the door here. This will be the security door that we let them in through. And so we'll take the delivery through here, at which point it'll come through here. It'll be checked twice, and then it'll be brought into the vault.
Well, is that security door only... Are you the only ones that have access to that door?
No, we're not. But we're the only ones that have access to this door. This is our door.
So they would come in that... Okay, so that...
Right. But I'm sharing the same concern you appear to have because the... You said this space behind your space that is not belonging to you. They will have access to that same...
Say that again?
They will have access to the same delivery door, correct?
Yes.
So you had a concern with the...
With the last one?
With the last one that they had... That they... You wanted them to have their own separate...
Yeah, you got to think... Maybe think about some ways to have your own entry or else delivery. That doesn't...
Maybe we could split the corridor and make it so that that side's only for us, and we have a door there that...
Something... Yeah, I mean, we might want to... You might want to think about preparing something that looks at that because in the past, we've asked there to be no commingling, if you will, of entry, you know, access kind of thing.
Okay, no problem.
Again, I'm going to... John?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
I have a number of questions.
Sure.
What's the square footage of your...
1,500 square feet.
With mezzanine?
With mezzanine.
1,500, okay. The police department has informed me that they have met with the petitioner, and they have approved the security plan.
Okay, thank you. Do you currently lease the place?
We do.
You currently do?
Yes.
And have you working with... There's some violations, as I understand it, on this place. Are you working to clear those up?
Yes.
The city manager wants me to make it clear that the city administration is opposed to any issuing of permits, including and not limited to issuing of a permit for marijuana retailing at this site until the building code and zoning code violations are addressed.
Okay.
Okay. I'm going to open this up to the public. As a reminder, this is the first time we've heard this, so we will not be deciding on it today. This will go before the planning board on May 24th.
Yes.
And you'll be back before this board on 6/14/22. Do we have to make that vote for the rule of necessity at this point?
6/14, sorry.
Not to my point, no.
Okay, so 6/14 back here, but 5/24 in the planning board.
Well, Ms. Chairman, that's the question, is do you want to continue to June or do you want to continue to July? Because...
I will not be here in June.
You'll not be here.
I have family obligations. I will not be here in June.
And in order for a vote to pass, you need four members, and those four members have to be at every meeting of that board. Since the chairman's not going to be here, you won't have four members next month.
We can push it to July.
Okay.
Well, then we will move... She will... You will still go before the planning board on the 24th, correct? But then you will come before us July...
The second Tuesday of July.
Second, yes, correct.
Let me check the date. I will tell you.
How many employees is going to be on the site?
10 to 15.
7 to 15?
10 to 15.
Oh, 10 and 15.
July 12th.
July 12th.
And I would like a letter waiving the statutory timeframe to allow that to happen.
Say that again?
They'll... The planning department will need a letter from you waiving the statutory time of review and so that we have... Because otherwise, we won't make the time.
Okay, no problem.
They will need that from you, and they'll need that from you within the next week.
No problem. Do you need it notarized?
No.
Okay, no problem. I'll have it right over.
Thank you. That being said, I am now going to open this to the public. Is there anybody... Again, this will not be your only opportunity to speak on this. You will have the opportunity to speak on it again in July. And is there anybody here who wishes to speak on this at this time? There being none, I am not closing this hearing. It will continue again the 24th of May in front of the planning board and July 12th here in front of the zoning board.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Okay, 220... 2022-05 is here. So 339-341 Broadway, 339-341 Broadway Realty Trust for special permit and variance approval to construct a second-story floor infill and full-third story in existing open height ceiling space with proposed use of second-floor... Second-story space as continuing restaurant space and the third story to be residential dwelling. Hello, please, this is... We've heard this before, John. Could you please tell us what the planning board had to say about this?
The planning board recommended approval.
With no conditions?
With standard conditions.
Standard conditions. Okay, sir, could you please introduce yourself again?
My name is Peter Vergianos. My family and I own 339-341. It's a building which consists of a restaurant on the first floor, and they also use the second floor as a restaurant, and would like to put in a two-bedroom apartment on the third floor.
And you're not raising the hell out of the ceiling? Again, you're not raising the roof. You're continuing the second floor, which was used by the restaurant, and you are creating the third as a residence?
Yes.
Is that true? John, does the department have anything to say before I open it up again to the public?
No, there was some concern expressed relative to access from the rear of the building. I did bring it up with the petitioner, and he did provide some updated materials, which I did not copy. So he has legal access out of the rear door through an alleyway to Fourth Street. There was a fence that was preventing that access. The fence was removed this weekend. They now have access to that site.
Okay, so there's no impediment. Okay. Before I open it up again to the public, does anybody on the board have anything that they would like to say? Again, this public hearing is still open. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this? This will be your last opportunity. There being none, I am closing the public... You're not... Okay, I'm closing the public portion of this hearing.
Now, these are the folders showing that the fence...
Showing the fence and then the removal of the fence.
Okay. John, are there any conditions that we feel are... Oh, actually, I'm sorry. I apologize. We're going to have to walk through the variance requirements on this. This requires a variance. And as a variance, I need my four... There are four conditions you have to meet on a variance, and you have to answer yes to all of them. We have no flexibility on that, so we're going to walk you through them. You can ask questions if you're unclear, but... John, okay. I think I wouldn't have these memorized by now. The first one, so if we're going to go through them one at a time. The variances sought... Now, John, what do we need the variances for in this case again?
Variance is for open space.
Open space, okay. So you need a variance for open space. "The variance is sought because of soil conditions, shape, or topography of such land or structure, and especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located." So is that why... Why do you need the variance? Is that because the shape of the building? You can't really go anywhere with it?
Pretty much, yes.
So there's not a whole lot you can do. You're not doing anything. You're not modifying it in the shape of the building. You're not making any changes?
No.
Is that okay, people?
Yes.
Okay. "A literal enforcement of the provisions of this chapter would involve a substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner or applicant." Only you can answer that one. Would it be... Is there a hardship that would... If you can't do this, will it be a hardship for you, financially or otherwise?
Well, yes, I would like it to... Like, we had this building for 37 years. We started our business 37 years ago, and it's like, it's just empty space that's not utilized, and we feel it will look nicer, and we'll get the potential of the building.
And otherwise, you... It's just too expensive if it's just an empty building?
Yes.
Okay. Yes?
Yes.
"Desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good." This isn't going to be bad for anybody, is it?
I don't think so. I think it's going to be nice.
No, it's actually going to be good to somebody because they can live there.
Yes.
"Desirable relief may be granted without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of this chapter." That means that you're not going to be messing up with the zoning code by doing this. The zoning code is okay with this?
Yes.
Okay. You got it. That being said, John, we have some conditions that I'm going to read for you. And so there are certain standard conditions that are applicable, which you will get from the planning department. And in accordance with this section, Section 34-106JC, tenants of the site will not be eligible to participate in the resident sticker parking program because you're asking for parking relief. Said restrictions shall be included in all lease, rental, or condo documents, and the rental, lease, or condo documents shall be submitted to the planning department for review and approval. So that's going to be in the lease or whatever sale document, and John's going to see that beforehand. And no lease, or sublease, or rental term of less than 12 months, and said restrictions shall be included in all rental, lease, and/or condo documents. Again, the same thing, and John has to see those. You okay with those?
Yes.
Okay. That being said, do I have a motion on this? Joan, do I have a motion?
Oh, yes. I make the motion to approve 2022-05-339 to 341 Broadway for a special permit and variance seeking approval to construct a second-floor story. Floor infill and full-third story.
What is... What it says there? What it says there? It's hard to say for some reason. I know. And with the conditions, though, that we articulated?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a second at that?
Second.
Hugo, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, they got to write it up. Takes a couple of weeks. It takes a while. And then you can check with John if you have any questions and make sure John gets a copy of the lease.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that's what I thought. Okay. 22... 2022-04-162 Broadway, Ruth Jeanette Guzman, "For a special permit and variance seeking approval for the conversion of an existing commercial space on the second floor and attic to a one-family residential unit with first-floor space remaining a commercial unit which does not meet current minimum zoning requirements for open space, lot area, excuse me, floor area ratio, and number of off-street parking spaces." John, what did the planning board have to say about this one?
Planning board recommended approval with standard conditions.
With standard conditions, okay. Who's here and wishes to speak on this? Ah, I didn't see you. I'm sorry. Please introduce yourself for the record. And me speak into the microphone. Bring it down to you, okay? Thank you.
Okay. My name is Ruth Jeanette Guzman. I own 162 Broadway. And I'm here to ask for a special permit to convert the second floor to residential. That was before residential. I converted to commercial, but now I'm not using anymore that space, so it's empty for a long time, and I want to do an apartment.
Okay. Okay, wait a minute. So do we have any other question... Wait a minute. Do we have any other questions on this before I open it up again to the public? Is there anybody who wishes to speak on this one? Last chance. Okay, there being none. You heard me speak earlier about the fact that there was a variance. You have to meet the four requirements, and you have a variance as well. So you have to answer each of those same questions, okay?
Yes.
John, the variance here again is for open space, lot area? They just basically, open space?
Open space.
Open space, okay. Now, did you hear what the other guy said? Okay, because he had the same need. "A variance is sought because the soil conditions, shape, or topography of such land or structure, and especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located." So what is it about this that says you can't do open space? It's the building, right? You're not doing anything to the building. There's no open space now. You're not adding anything to the building.
No, the only thing that I'm going to do is put the appliances back to the same room that was before. I don't change any of the structure of the building when I bought it. That was the same. I just put the appliances back.
But you're not doing any expansion. You're not changing the building at all?
No, ma'am.
Ladies and gentlemen?
Yes.
Okay. Second one. "A literal enforcement of the provisions of this chapter would involve a substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner or applicant." Is this going to cost you... Is this going to be difficult for you financially?
Yes.
Tell me why.
I mean, I'm sorry.
Is it... Well, it has... You have to... It's going... The provision is going to be hard for you, either financially or otherwise. If we don't do this, there's going to be a financial hardship for you. Will you have a financial hardship on this?
Well, yeah, because that will be a completely florenti that I can get some income from there.
So you won't... You need to get income from that? So if you don't... If you can't do this, you won't be able to get proper income from it?
Yes.
Good. John? "This may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good." Is this a good thing for the public or a bad thing for the public?
It's good because people are asking for... They are asking for apartments, and I'm going to provide a family to live there.
Okay. And last, you can do this without nullifying or... And last, you can do this without nullifying or, or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of this chapter. The chapter, this is not inconsistent with what, what, I'm, this is not inconsistent with what the zoning code would like to see in this area. Correct housing and mixed with development. Correct?
Yes.
Okay, you got it. That being, John, let's see, do we have, okay. Let me look, we have a few conditions. So there are standard conditions, which you will work with John to understand what those are, that every, that apply to everybody. And, um, as, you're, you have the same conditions as we mentioned with the earlier applicant, which is because you're asking for parking relief, you will not be eligible, anybody who lives there will not be eligible for the residence sticker program. And you will need no lease, sublease or rental of less than twelve months. Both of those restrictions must be included in the lease or whatever document that you use with the tenant, and they must be approved by John's department, the planning department, before they get signed. Are you comfortable with that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That being said, do I have a motion, Hugo, on this?
Yes, I make a motion to approve, um, case twenty twenty-two dash zero four, um, one sixty-two Broadway for special permit and variance seeking approval for conversion of an existing commercial space on the second floor and attic to a one-family resident unit with the standard conditions that were previously mentioned.
And the conditions we articulated.
Yes.
Do I have a second on that? Joe, I'll get, okay, I'll give Joan the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, you got it? Come back and check with John what the conditions are. Make sure he sees the lease before you sign anything with anyone, okay?
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. I'm gonna give that back to Hugo since he's the only one who has got. The next one we're going on to is one fifty-seven Washington Ave, Madeline Garcia, for special permits and variances seeking approval to establish four residential units by constructing a second floor above the existing commercial space, which does not meet the current minimum zoning requirements for front, rear and side yard setbacks, open space, lot size, number of off-street parking spaces, and also exceeds maximum density.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
David Midland representing, and actually, the petitioner is Wash Ave dash G B M A LLC. Madeline Garcia, who's here with me, is the manager of the LLC. So she's technically not the owner or the petitioner. This is, the proposed project is to add a second story on top of Ms. Garcia's office. Four small apartments. I'm not sure, um, Mr. Dupree, do you have the latest renderings that Madeline gave you yesterday?
I do.
Okay, so, the design has changed a couple of times since we submitted. I will start by saying, and I know the board knows this, but we're in the B R two district, retail business, and the ordinance itself says the purpose of the B R two district is to encourage uses supportive of the adjacent residential areas and to allow for the development of residential buildings and residential units above ground floor retail. And that's exactly what this is. Technically, it's not retail, it's office. There are two small businesses aside from Ms. Garcia's real estate office. You can see her car is parked on the left-hand side of the building there. This is the latest rendering, which after some consultation with the historical society, incorporates the present hip roof, maintains the brick on the ground floor, modest signage, the awning over the door, um, and adding the second floor. The one item that Ms. Garcia disagreed with is a historical plaque on the building because of the, um, past use as a funeral home. There was one of three funeral homes in a row at that area. There won't be any change to the footprint of the building. There'll be plantings in the front. Ms. Garcia is happy to plant a tree in the, in the bay that's on Washington Avenue, right in front of the building. The one issue that we've been working with is parking. Right now, the parking lot is shared with Thorf Funeral Home. There's room to park on Ms. Garcia's property. The issue is backing out of the parking spaces, um, onto the Thorf property. So, I believe there's space for at least three parking spaces there, possibly more because, um, let's see. Madeline, could you point to where the present, the gate is now?
Don't, don't speak unless you're gonna talk into the microphone, please.
So the gate is where the twenty-two point eight is, where basically says gate, yes.
You can get, maybe perhaps get that from David so you can, you can actually tell us.
Maybe not.
Oh, well, maybe not. Ah, there it goes.
So basically, the gate is here now, that obviously would be removed. And there would be a spot here, here, and then this is, as you can see, our property line, right here. And then there would be another spot here. I know there is an, uh, an actual garage there now that used to be used before, it's, it's existing. So that's pretty much the layout of the lot.
And there's no, there's no divide, is that, is that just, is there a fence or anything dividing the properties?
There is not at this moment, no.
So that's why you were saying that you could, they would pull out into that parking area?
Correct.
Couple of other things. John, I didn't notice as you were scrolling through the newer photo, the newer renderings, but the latest design incorporates a roof deck which addresses the, um, open space requirement.
And that's five hundred and forty-three square feet, which would allow for being space as required.
Does that, that, does that meet the open space requirement, John?
Yes, yes, it would.
Thank you. Does that take away the need for variance?
For that variance.
For that variance, but not all variance, okay. Okay, good.
Okay, and, and the, um, the actual dimensional requirements, it's the existing building footprint. It would be one hundred percent.
There's no height implications? It's not over height or anything?
No. No, one of the designs, the intermediary design had a flat roof and it was kind of, you know. And I, I didn't see this until this evening when I walked in, and it was like, that's great. And, you know, it also shows that Ms. Garcia is a good citizen, good neighbor, and she listened to what the historical commission had to say also, and modified the design and, uh...
So am I seeing two roofs, or is that, what is the top one? Is that top one just for mechanicals?
Correct.
Thing at the top, so that's not a roof deck?
Correct. That's just for mechanicals. So there would only be access to the, to the age of people.
Okay, thank you.
And the, um, if any of the funeral home is using their parking spaces, how the tenant's gonna come in and out?
Well, that's why we were mentioning that, um, in, essentially, there's three spots as of right now because of that. In the event that, um, there is a property line or a fence put up. That's why we were mentioning the three spots, as opposed to saying we have all this space.
So, yeah, so the spaces that are on the side there, where it could not legitimately be used, is what you're saying? The ones over there?
Unless we use...
The ones on the bottom.
Well, could you point out where the spaces?
And, and also, unless we use them tandem, right? Because our property line is right here. So essentially, you're coming off of Washington Ave into here, you would be able to park here and here, right? And then, in all reality, you can park another vehicle here if you needed to back out of it. But, in the event, or even pull into here and park one here, right? Let's imagine, uh, an imaginary line here. And then, this is another one, and then you can always do tandem here.
How would they get out? So they have to?
This, this is, uh, Cary Avenue.
Oh, oh, they, okay, I'm sorry, so they can walk right into the street, okay.
And then this...
So they don't have to pack it, they don't have to back on a direction?
Correct. Exactly. So in the event, worst-case scenario, if the parking needed to be done tandem, there is the possibility that we could essentially do tandem. But at this moment, what we're saying is that's what the lot or the plan has at this moment.
Is there already a curb cut on Cary?
There is, there is one here, that, the, actually, the whole entire, because, um, the whole area is right from this fence here.
Oh, yeah, that's one big curb cut.
And then there's one here as well.
Okay, yep.
Correct.
Thank you.
You said about putting fences. Where, where will you put the fence?
Oh, I know, I, I, I meant it in, in the, in the sense, like, let's just say there was an imaginary fence here. But there is not. But let's just say that you can essentially pull in tandem, pull in tandem, that would be two. You could probably do three here and then another one. Worst-case scenario, obviously, tandem is not the best ideal situation, but worst-case scenario.
Now, do you know if the funeral home is, has like, what, six spaces there, that's showing in the plan? Six, something like that?
I really wouldn't be able to, I mean, these are their spots, I really wouldn't be able to tell you exactly how many cars they fit when they have a funeral home. I know they take up their whole entire lot, um, and so, but I, I, I've never really counted, I mean, I...
But that was my question, if they're using the whole parking space, how the tenant's gonna come in and out if they're parking, you know, like, it's...
Right, and that's why I was mentioning that the entrance would be here for the parking here, here, potentially one here, and then tandem in here.
Yeah.
This is with this here.
If they already park, the people living in, in your building?
Right.
How are they gonna back up and go either Cary out or go Washington when there's no room?
Well, you know, it's funny that you say that, because we've had that situation already, where we've had a full office or cars in the park, and, and, I'm sorry, parked in the back, and they have a funeral home and they put up their cones, and it's never, we've, we, we've never had an issue to this point. I mean, I guess once, you know, it may be different, but we've never had an issue. They put up their cones, we, you know, allow them, uh, not allow them, that's your space, but we've never had an issue as of right now.
How, do you, do you know what the funeral home said about it? If that comes in a conflict on the parking space, have they mentioned anything to you?
Well, they're right here.
Oh, they're right here, okay.
So I'm sure they'll have their opportunity to answer your questions.
I mean, the other, the other issue, it's not an issue, but the other, um...
I have a question.
favorable factor is, this is right on Washington Avenue, multiple bus lines, full access to public transportation. And again, it's in the B R two district, which is encouraging this type of use, but also acknowledges the, the tenants who might rent these apartments are right on public transportation. There are other buildings that have those issues. The area is being developed into a beautiful little mixed-use neighborhood. And this is the absolutely perfect project to fit in there. So hopefully, the parking can be worked out. If not, there'll be some spaces there and, um, hopefully, there'll be tenants very anxious to rent these beautiful new units without any parking and acknowledging the city policy of not being able to take advantage of the resident parking.
You might wanna just think about preparing a scenario of, of the tandem or the, assuming a parking that you can use, so, and share that with the department.
Right, correct.
Joan, you had a question?
With regards to the garage, did you say that you're going to board it up, or are you gonna use it?
So, uh, it all depends on what the board recommends, of course, but I just, uh, mentioned it as an additional parking spot, or the potential of an additional parking spot. In addition, I'd like to mention that the bus stop, the one eleven, literally opens where my front office is. I hear the route every single day out of my office. I went to take a picture yesterday of the blue bikes that are literally across the street from me, they were gone. So today, they're back, but yesterday, I was like, I want it, they were gone, because people use them all the time. Five minutes from the Silver Line, and I'm literally five minutes from the commuter rail, which is down the street. So my hopes is, of course, I would never say to a tenant, you have a car, I can't rent to you. But my hopes is that th- these one-bedroom units are the commuter's dream, that, wow, the bus stop is right here, you walk two blocks down the street to Broadway, you have access to the bus that takes you into East Boston. And so, is that realistic? Well, that's, that's my hope and that's my dream, that this is going to be, with the gas prices and the vehicle cost, that this would be the ideal situation for someone who can't afford gas in a car.
One thing to keep in mind, though, Ms. Garcia, is that if you ask for parking relief, your, any tenants will in fact not be eligible to have the, the parking sticker.
Correct.
So there will be, you know, you may have to address that question of, well, if you don't have a car...
Right.
You can't bring, I mean, you can't bring cars.
Offer a rent discount.
Yeah, what?
Offer a rent discount.
John, uh, can they consider the garage parking area as a parking space?
Uh, yes, they could.
Okay.
This, go ahead, you go.
Is anywhere you can relocate the trash barrels that you have right in the corner?
Absolutely, absolutely, can definitely do that. I, I, you know, you, you kinda get into a location, when I got here, it was a funeral home and renovated the, the property and did everything over, and of course, you kinda miss out on the small things. So absolutely, we can definitely do that.
I'm gonna open this to the pub, oh, I'm sorry, Joan. The, the units, there's four units?
This is correct.
How many bedrooms?
One bedroom, three one-bedrooms and a one-two bedroom.
Okay, three one-bedrooms and one two-bedroom?
Yes.
Okay. And, um, are they rentals?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have a layout of what they would look like? Do you have a?
Yes.
So how big are they?
They're approximately four hundred and forty-two square feet. They're not very big units. Um, they, they vary in size. The one that's a little bit larger, of course, is the two-bedroom. But, um, for the most part, they're, they're reduced in size. We wanted to make sure that we fit everything in one level, because I really wanted them to be smaller units. I really wanted to stay within the smaller units.
With regards to the trash, where is the trash going to be kept?
You mean as of, at, moving forward? Mr. Mahoney, moving forward?
Where would you take your trash?
You know, something, if we needed to put the trash, we have additional space past the garage, so there's the garage. And if we needed to put it in-house for the time being or for future, for the future, we would work it out. We would make sure that it's no longer there.
But you're gonna, again, that's something that, before we get to the final...
Of course.
...decision on this, we run and see what you would work out.
Okay, absolutely. I, I'll have that ready. And the other thing is that you noticed the old design, as, as Attorney Midland mentioned, the old design of the property, I was totally under the impression that, after meeting with the historical commission, I understood that this is, this is a landmark for this, for this, uh, city. Growing up on Bloomingdale Street, I always saw the three funeral homes. So it's, it's gonna be actually rather nice not to, you know, just to have a different building there. I mean, saw three funeral homes all my life. Excuse me.
Did you, did you say that, that Ms. Garcia disagreed with having a plaque on it, or?
I, I do, only because it's been a funeral home. So I don't see history in, in the fact that, you know, saying, now, if I, I, and I've been doing research, I even contacted the previous owner, um, who I'm actually supposed to be in, uh, meeting with, to find out what was there before, because the property is not in a historical area. But, um, after meeting with the historical commission, that was one of the recommendations. I personally just felt that going to a beautiful building like...
Make sure you continue to talk with it.
Sorry, I know, I'm getting closer to the property. Going to a, uh, this building and finding out, you know, this was a funeral home before, that's what I'm trying to get away from. So that's the only thing that I felt that I didn't see the relevance to the historic. You know, it isn't like a president spoke there or someone famous or anything like that. I just didn't see that the relevance there.
Okay, yeah, that's their job, I'm just, just gonna say that, we are not responsible for that, but they get to rule on that one.
Yeah.
The, the commission suggested that she might go back to the uses previous to the funeral home. I believe it was retail site, for the retail site, she might go back to that. But, again, that's, that's a recommendation, it's not a, it's not a requirement.
Anything else before I open it up?
Yeah, just one last thing. For the garage, so how many parking spaces are allowed for the garage in there? Is it one or two?
One vehicle.
Oh, one vehicle.
Mm-hmm.
You heard me speak earlier that I will not be here in June. So we need four people to hear this. Would you be amenable to moving this to July, to our, our next meeting of the, of the zoning board? Well, man, that would be wonderful, thank you, even though you go to, you'll still go before the planning board on the twenty-fourth of May.
Okay. Now, I didn't see my name on that, on that agenda. I didn't see us on that, on the twenty-fourth.
The planning board agenda hasn't been filed yet.
Oh, okay, oh, sorry, I thought I looked at, okay.
So the planning board is the twenty-fourth of May.
Okay.
So because this is the first time we're hearing a zoning, zoning request for a special permit has to go there first. And then, so instead of, instead of seeing you here on the fourteenth of June, we'll see you here on the twelfth of July.
Okay.
And we need a letter to John that says, you can take care of that, Ms. Attorney. So, um, the attorney, the letter saying that you agree to the extension of time.
Of course.
The statutory timeframe.
Statutory timeframe.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Now, I'm gonna open it up to the public.
Of course.
Is there anybody here who wishes to speak, and this will not be your only opportunity? And this will not be your only opportunity. As I said, they will be back here in July. So, if you'd like to speak, please come and speak at the microphone. Thank you. And announce your, I'll give you your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Amy Thorf Feinberg, and my husband Jeffrey Feinberg. We are the owners of Thorf Funeral Service. My family's owned it since 1933, located at 151 Washington Avenue, as you saw in the pictures.
And what would you like to say?
I have some concerns about the building, many of which were already brought up by the Board, first of all, being the parking situation. When I have a funeral, there would be no way for people to back up. A funeral, as everybody knows, is a very intimate event, so I would not be able to ask people to move their cars. So, there is no way, you know, she would be able to use our parking lot at that time. So, that's definitely a concern. You know, we've discussed fences. I would appreciate if this were to pass, that there would be a privacy fence put up, simply because if it is residential, you know, it's a business. This is how I make my livelihood, and I want to make sure that, you know, my customers coming, my clientele coming to see me, don't have to see any residential trash or anything else. Would ask for the trash to be, you know, fenced off separately, as was mentioned on the side, which is typically where I believe it's been. But, you know, I'm really just trying to maintain that it's a business, and I'm also very much concerned about the construction noise. Obviously, that could greatly affect, you know, how I make a living. And I'm just concerned about, you know, how she would be able to do this without it impacting my parking lot and my business.
Okay, thank you. Just introduce yourself formally, sir. Thank you.
Jeff Feinberg from Thorf Funeral Service, 151 Washington Avenue. With the latest revision of the plans, the open space roof deck also would be over that, that funeral experience. So, certainly raises a concern for how that appears to people who are coming in and out of the funeral, in mourning, and having people or potentially residents on their roof decks trying to enjoy their personal space, but also intruding and being so high over, really looking over the parking lot and their entrance and, and conducting of the services.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Am I allowed to ask them a question?
Not to, to this, to the couple here that knows. No, well, go ahead.
How many cars you can fit in your parking?
When we, when we do a funeral, we actually park it differently than it's laid out like that. That's why it's wide open. So, our cars, we used to, either we'll loop them in or they'll back right in. I'm going to say on average, we could probably get 18 to 20. I mean, depending upon who's, you know, I always have men that would be, are working my lot.
Okay.
So, you know, if not, I typically would leave it open, but it's just slightly, you know, we have to change things around during a funeral service.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this? Again, this will not be your only opportunity. That being said, I'm not closing the public portion again. Go before the Planning Board on May 24th, and back here on the 12th of July with the letter beforehand, beforehand, probably within the next week, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. And think about the questions that got posed here and what you might want to change.
Of course, thank you.
Thank you. Next case before us is 2022-10-213 Everett Avenue, Verdant, care of Doug Meduets, for special permits and variances, seeking approval for the demolition of a one-story structure, the combination of three adjoining lots, and the construction of an 11-story research and development lab, which does not meet the current minimum zoning requirements for lot area, lot area, rear and front yard setbacks, minimum aisle width, and number of off-street parking spaces, and also exceeds maximum number of stories and floor area ratio.
Good evening, members of the Board. Again, my name is Doug Medvets. I am part of the applicant group. We're actually going to ask for a continuance tonight to July. We believe with the size of the project, we, we'd like to have a full Board review of this. So, again, we'll, we'll ask for a continuance to July.
Do I have a motion to grant a continuance until July?
I make a motion.
Make the motion, seconded by Joe. Do we need a letter again from them?
Yes.
We need the letter?
Sure.
So, you would, you would, you would agree to provide a letter extending the, waiving the statutory review period?
Yes.
And get that to John.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the last, our last business for the day would be 2021-07-250 Marginal Street, 2122 Highland Street, 22 Willow Street, a request for an extension of a previously improved, previously approved variance. We, there, we, as you know, we can extend a variance one time for six months. Could you please introduce yourself?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Director DePriste. For the record, Peter Tam from Gulston and Stores, on behalf of Hines, who's the new owner of the property.
Could you wait just one second, please? When I can't hear you, it's, that's scary. I'm sorry, try that again.
Second time's the charm. For the record, Peter Tam of Gulston and Stores, on behalf of Hines, who's the new owner of the property. We are before the Board this evening for a, an extension simply of the variance. The variance, as the Board may be aware, will lapse if, if not commenced and exercised in early June. So, we're being proactive here. Hines recently purchased the property, and they're actively involved with me, Ben Wiggins from Hines, as well, to answer any questions. But, quite simply.
You can't shut the door, sir. Thank you, John. Let's keep going. Third time's the charm.
I need him at, at my house to get my teenager's attention. So, Hines recently purchased the property. They're acting expeditiously to exercise the special permits and the variances, but quite simply, there is a tenant that they've inherited that needs additional time to vacate the premise. So, for that reason, we're seeking the variance.
You're seeking extension of the variance, a one-time extension. Do we have a motion to approve the extension of a variance? Made by you go, seconded by Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
Good luck, that was an easy one. Thank you. I'm sorry, Ms. Ma'am, would you something you'd like to say? I can't, I'm sorry, ma'am, I can't hear you, and I, I, please come in front of the microphone, I don't know.
320 Rev. each parkway. That was, that was withdrawn.
Oh, ma'am, we're not talking about that one. That's been withdrawn. We're not going to, we didn't actually speak on that today. I spoke that they, they moved, they withdrew that, and they will come back in the fall with a different proposal.
The place won't open at this point until the fall?
They, they will not be before us until sometime in, after July, after August, after August. So, they will be here sometime in the fall.
So, they won't be opening until the fall?
They can't do anything. They can't do anything until they come before us. They have withdrawn their proposal.
Thank you for telling that to me.
You're very welcome, you're very welcome.
Thank you for coming.
I know, it gets confusing sometime. And even though I'm a big mouth, you can't always hear me.
Is there any way to find out on this when?
It will be, it'll start all over again, and it'll go, it'll be just like it's a brand-new proposal when it comes in again.
Now, we came in here not realizing that it was rescheduled. Is there any way we could have found this out and?
The rescheduling, you can check, they, they announce, these, these get posted a week, monthly.
The withdrawal wasn't requested until tonight.
Yeah, they didn't ask for it until tonight to take it, to withdraw. So, that was why, so we didn't know, so. And we had to vote on it and approve it, so. Thank you very much. I'm sorry for the inconvenience. I apologize for keep, well, at least we didn't keep you too long. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Well, first of all, I have a motion.
So, when, what's the timeline that?
We have to act within what, 120 days? How many days?
For a variance, you have to act within 100 days of the time they submit it, not the time you first hear it, the time they actually submit it to the Office. You have 100 days to act on it.
You have 100 days to act on it.
But, they can waive that. So, if they don't waive, we have to ask or it's approved. You know, is that what you're asking? So, that's why we've had to extend, they have to send in a letter to approve, to, to agree to an extension of the hearing.
And on a special permit, you have to open the hearing within 65 days, and then make a decision within 90 days when you close the hearing.
Within 90 days?
Yes.
Okay, so 90 days is three months, right? Approximately?
From the time they file?
No, no.
No, no.
Well, for the special permit, it's from the time you close the hearing.
From the time we close the hearing, okay. But, we haven't closed the hearing yet, so we haven't, the variances have different timelines than the, so this way, they, they can, they stay. So, this way, if they send the letter, then we can continue to act for further time. You know, because some things come in front of us and go on for a long time.
Right.
Because they either agree to the extensions.
And, and if they don't grant the letter and you don't act within 100 days or open hearing within 65 days, it's, it's approved as is.
Yeah, it's assumed it's approved.
It's assumed it's approved. If, if they don't get the letter.
If we don't act, if, if they don't, if we don't act and they haven't submitted a request to extend it, it's assumed that they, it is approved.
Okay, so are we talking about the same thing, so in regards to 320, the park, Rev. each parkway?
320 is, yes, same, yeah, same thing.
No, no, they withdrew, they withdrew, they're starting all over again.
Square one.
They're starting all over again. They don't exist anymore. They withdrew, and they're going to start all over again.
Okay, so they withdrew prior.
They withdrew today, they just withdrew today.
No, the last time.
Yes, they did. They withdrew once before, and they, and they made some changes, presented you with a new petition, that's the petition that you were going to look at tonight. They withdrew that petition.
Okay, and that's allowed to do so?
Yes.
You can withdraw as many times.[1676.08]